It's been having me every meeting. Like I have to read, download it.
We're ready to begin when you are. Thank you.
Okay, Meyer, would you go ahead and call the role, please?
Commissioner Simmons.
Present.
Commissioner Winmiller.
Present.
Commissioner Beach.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Golladay. Commissioner Cox. Commissioner Pastello. Commissioner Gladney.
Present.
Commissioner Moore.
Okay, we can go ahead and do like you said, Toby, up to you, number four, before we have any vote or anything, right?
Commissioner Moore just joined, therefore we do have a quorum.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Moore.
Sorry about that.
No problem. Before we move into today's huge agenda that we have, I want to take a moment to share with everyone the good news that that one of our employees, Ms. Ross, who has joined us this morning here. She, the good news is that MetroLink Allied University Security Supervisor Rochelle Ross was awarded the Outstanding Security Officer as one of the 2023 U.S. Outstanding Security Performance Award recipients, which were revealed on September the 10th at the awards reception held at the GSX in Dallas, where security professionals gathered to celebrate the best of the best from the U.S. security sector. Ms. Ross has dedicated nearly two decades of her life to safeguarding the light rail transportation system in St. Louis. As the shift supervisor for one of the busiest metro link zones in the city of St. Louis, Ms. Ross is not only serves as a mentor to new officers, but also is a familiar and friendly face to passengers and the metro staff. In addition, Ms. Ross can always be counted on to offer his historical perspective to the allied management team, allowing managers to better tailor staffing and deployment changes based on success and failures in the past. At this time, if you would help me in congratulating Ms. Ross on such an outstanding achievement. Rochelle, thank you very much.
Congratulations. Thank you.
And would you like to say a few words?
Yes, sir. I'd like to say that in my 20 years of service, I'm dedicated to being out here. That's why I've always changed different contract securities. I like where I work. I love Metro. I love being out here. Each time, every day, it does get a little harder because time changes. And I do want to thank the management team for helping us to accomplish some of the things that we have to do because the task that we do out here every day gets a little harder each day. But I am willing to get up every day like I do. I was at a time to get out here day by day to make it happen. And I really appreciate you guys acknowledging the fact of my 20 years of service out here on the MetroLink. Thank you.
Well, we thank you for the job that you do and a great job. And we're really proud to have you a part of our staff. Is there any other commissioners like to make a comment?
I just wanted to say thank you so much for your service. Congratulations on your award. It's awarded so well deserved. And it's people like you that make our job as commissioners so much easier. So thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Well, if I may, Chairman, thank you so much, Mrs. Summers. People forget that it's someone backboning this operation. And it's people like you. It's really not us. It's people like you. We stand on your shoulders. So we appreciate you so much and all that you've done and all that you'll do. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Thanks, Vern. We appreciate it. Okay. Okay, moving on, item B, Worldwide Technology. Toby, you have some comments for that?
I do. Thank you, Chairman. So on, many of you are aware on June the 3rd and 4th of this year, really a great Illinois 300 NASCAR event with our partners over at Worldwide Technology Raceway. But very nicely, and in your packet is just a thank you letter about our great staff that worked through the weekend. Remember, a race like this is a huge economic benefit to the entire region, but specifically to Illinois. And during that period of time, there was extreme heat in the area. And one of the things that we do on an emergency basis with partners like this is bring some buses out for emergency for cooling, literally for the customers. And I got a very nice letter from Mr. Francois, the owner and operator of that great facility, specifically commenting on the great standouts of Trenice winners, Terry Fondren and Darren Lee and all the staff. You know, we had the occasion to also thank Officer Ross. Indeed, remember, we have hundreds of people who are out there representing the agency. I was glad that you saw Officer Ross this morning. These are the faces that really make Missouri and Illinois move, who represent us. They deserve our support, and I'm very happy and pleased to highlight that this morning. And I really appreciate the board helping us recognize these great individuals. So thank you for that this morning as we move on. Thank you, Chairman.
Fine. Thank you for those comments. Moving on, Meyer, I know we received several comment cards for today's meeting. Could you give the commissioners a brief summary of what they contain?
Yes, Chair. The agency received 59 public comments for today's meeting, primarily pertaining to caller ID services. All the comments were distributed to the Board of Commissioners and staff for review prior to the meeting. The comments in their entirety will be incorporated into the online meeting materials upon conclusion of today's meeting, and they will be included in the minutes from today's meeting as well.
Very good. Thank you for that. Next item, the minutes from the June 23, 2023 Board of Commissioners open meeting have been provided for a review with the board. Are there any corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, I need a motion to approve those minutes.
Don't move.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, ayes have it. Next item, the minutes from the July 14, 2023 Special Board of Commissioners Open Meeting have been provided for a review by the board. Are there any corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, I need a motion to approve.
So move.
Have a second? I have a motion and I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, ayes have it. Next item, the minutes from the August 10, 2023 Special Board of Commissioners Open Meeting have been provided for review by the board. Are there any corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, I need a motion to approve those minutes.
So move.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Report to the President, Mr. Roach.
Good morning, Chairman. So certainly the biggest issue to discuss here is obviously what is going on. And the fact that we have 59 public comments, I think, brings a focus on the compelling nature of the service that we provide. First of all, I want to recognize the simple fact that we are struggling for our service. And these, there is a reality associated with both paratransit service and with our regular service. And this is due fundamentally to our employment crisis. But it is very fair and very real that we need to recognize the struggle that our customers are going through right now. We share in that struggle. It is a reality that we are trying to move folks around Missouri and Illinois, and we are doing that in a very, very difficult situation. But one of the things that we need to be sure to relay to the community is that we will push every single button that we can, and we will take every action that we can. I want to thank the board for support of those actions, and I will highlight several of those right now. And Chuck will have more to say about that. We have advanced call of ride pay in the top category slot to move payments up to help that out. We have advanced the 5K bonus for new hires in call of ride, and we'll continue to do so. The good news is that we have had multiple very strong hiring events, the last three of which we have advanced 170 new employment contract offers. We, of course, now are under a three-year contract with our partners at 788, including several incentives to be sure that we are retaining those employees. They are very, very important. We have revamped the fundamental training, both on call of ride and, for instance, in the regular bus and metro link service, to be sure that we are retaining every single employee. So what is important is that within, A, we recognize the reality of the crisis. We recognize the reality of these compelling public comments, which are very real, and that we are sure that we execute and take action on that. One thing that I am also compelled to talk about is our oversight capacity and partners that we have with the Federal Transit Administration. They are also paying attention to all of these issues. And in light of that, under the normal audit process, under the triennial review, FTA hired and sent specific reviewers in the connection to review our paratransit service. These are high, high-level professionals that came into the St. Louis area over September 12th, 13th, and 14th. It includes detailed review of all of our data points, a one-on-one review of paratransit services. On the 14th, and let me just talk very briefly about the high level of these individuals. The lead reviewer, Mr. Richard Garrity, is passionate about paratransit service and has 44 years of experience in consulting on paratransit. And he looked at our operation in detail. At the exit interview on September the 14th, Mr. Garrity informed me that we would have zero findings, zero findings, albeit with the concern, the very real concern across the country of an employment crisis. That is a reality. So we are doing everything we can. We will continue to do everything we can. We will keep our ears open on extraordinary measures that we can take to continue to solidify these things. That report will be available to the public in written form in the second week of October through our partners at FTA. I'm very proud of that report. It will include the kind of suggestions that professionals like that will make, and we will be open to all of those suggestions. What I want to assure the public, and I want to assure the commissioners today, is we have dedicated staff who will work every day at improving this service. It is very important to us. The one issue that I will push back on is that we do not care, that we will not address these issues. We absolutely care. We care very much. I have many dedicated professionals who care very much about our customers and their ability to get out and move St. Louis. It has to be done. I agree that we need to improve, but we need to improve certainly on the basis of an employment crisis. We do not need more money from our partners. We simply need help in addressing all of these issues and getting as many quality employees as we can. And we will work on the arc of that recovery as hard as we can. And again, I want to dedicate myself and my staff to being sure that we will respond, and we will push and take every measure that we can to recover and get better at those fundamental service aspects. Chairman, that concludes my remarks. I really appreciate your time and attention this morning.
Fine, thank you. And I just want to follow up on that, and I think it's worth noting to the other commissioners that I know you have kept myself and Vice Chair, Mr. Gladney, informed of this process, and you've continued to do so. We attended one of the meetings a while back, and I mean, it was heartwarming to hear some of those stories. And I just want to make sure, just to echo your comments, that speaking for myself and hopefully the entire commission, that this is on the top of our list. It's not been put aside, and we're going to continue to do that. I'm really excited about this audit report. And just to clarify, this audit that was done was not hired by us to be done. It was the FTA that did it, correct?
Yes, Chairman. This is under the normal FTA triennial review. Given what is going on, not only here and across the country, they ordered this supplemental onsite audit with the specialist, and it was very well received. These are great professionals who we partner with, who are interested in serving the public. I'm very proud of the review, but also lean into these circumstances and be sure that our partners at FTA, if they have any requests of us, that we will respond to them.
Very good. Thank you. Is there any commissioners got any questions for Mr. Roach on that topic?
I just have a comment. I haven't had the opportunity to go through all 59 comments, but I went through several of them this morning. Most of them were posted in the last 24 hours. And I just wanted to say I appreciate the comments from the public. I appreciate them keeping this front and center for not only staff but commissioners, and that it's really important that members of the community, particularly those most affected by the paratransit shortage that we have, that they hold us accountable and that they submit comments and know that we are really trying hard to work with them in partnership to get this taken care of. So I appreciate the time and effort that people took to make those comments.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of make the point, Rose, maybe appreciate the comments. I think what the folks in the comments and what the folks in the meetings and the Disability Access Network that ByState runs, what they all say is they want us to take action. And I think this board has taken action. I think Toby has taken action, and I think, most importantly, his staff has taken action. It's not fixed yet, but 170 new offers, sounds good. That's moving in the right direction. We've increased bonuses to get new people on board. So I think we are managing a very difficult situation, and it is, you know, better now than it was a couple of months ago. And hopefully, a couple of months from now, it'll be better. So I want to thank the community for keeping us on our toes and bringing these issues to us, but also Toby's staff for being so responsive and good in helping us fix this.
Thank you. Any other comments? Fine, moving along, reported the Operation Committee, Commissioner Winmiller.
Good morning, everyone. A virtual meeting of the Operations Committee was held on August 18, 2023 at 8:30 a.m. The draft minutes of the meeting are included in your meeting packet under item number 19. I'm sorry, under item number nine. The Operations Committee is recommending approval of eight items, which are noted on today's agenda as the Consent Agenda Item Number 13. That includes the B, the Downtown Airport Six Surplus Property Holdings Resolution 1286, the Contract Extension for the Downtown Tunnel Repairs and Standpipe Replacement Design and Construction Phase Services Resolution 1287, Contract Award for WSP USA, the Major On-Call General Engineering Consulting, Civil and Structural Engineering and Surveying Services, which is Resolution 1288, the Contract Award for On-Call General Engineering Consulting Services for Multiple Disciplines Resolution 1289, Contract Award for Northside/Southside Jefferson Alignment Program Management Consultant Phase Two Resolution 1290, the Contract Award for the Fleet Tire Requirement Resolution 1291, the Contract Award for the Illinois Bus Cleaning Resolution 1292, the Contract Modification for Light Rail Vehicle Brake Caliper Overhaul Resolution 1293. In addition to the Consent Agenda, Tom Curran, Executive Vice President of Administration, gave a presentation at the August Committee Meeting regarding a contract modification for track systems upgrades. That item is also on today's agenda for approval separately under item number 14. In addition, at the August Committee Meeting, an operations summary and workforce update was provided by Chuck Stewart, Executive Vice President and Chief Operating Officer for Metro Transit. That concludes my report for the Operations Committee.
Fine. Thank you for that report. Moving on, report of the Audit, Finance, and Administration Committee. Commissioner Beach, you have a report?
Yes, thank you. Good morning. A meeting of the AFA Committee was held virtually on August 18th, following the Operations Committee Meeting. The draft minutes of that meeting are included in the meeting materials today under item 10. The committee is recommending approval of four items, which are all noted on today's agenda, also under the Consent Agenda Item 13. That's letters, item J, Contract Award for Independent Audit Services. That's Resolution 1294. Item K, the Contract Modifications for Talent Management Solutions. That's Resolution 1295. Item L, the Soul Source Contract for Finance Management Software from Cronus Dimensions Upgrade. That's Resolution 1296. Item M, Revision Support Policies, Chapter 30, Audit, Finance, and Budget. That's Resolution 1297. At the August meeting, several informational items were also presented to the committee, including from the Internal Audit Department, the follow-up summary for the fourth quarter of this fiscal year, status report for the fourth quarter of this fiscal year, the SSO status report for the second quarter of this calendar year, update on risk management insurance program, financial statements, treasures report, the procurement report, and the pension plan, 401K retirement savings plan, other post-employment benefits, trust investment performance update as of June 30th of this year. And Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report of the AFA Committee.
Fine. Thank you for that report. Moving on, I will give the report of the Safety and Security Committee. A virtual meeting of the Safety and Security Committee was held on August 10, 2023 at 9:15 a.m. immediately following a special report meeting of the Board of Commissioners. The draft minutes of the meeting are included in the board packet today under item number 11. The committee is recommending approval of one item, which is noted on today's agenda as Consent Agenda Item Number 13, which is a 2023 Public Transportation Agency Safety Plan Resolution Number 1285. This concludes my report of the Safety and Security Committee Meeting. Moving on, if there are any adjustments to the Consent Agenda, I'd like to hear them at this time?
Yes, I have one. At the request of staff, I ask that item D, Resolution Number 1288, be removed and held from the Consent Agenda.
Okay. If there's no further adjustments of the Consent Agenda, I would entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda Items 13A through 13C and Items 13E through 13M as referenced in the committee reports and as outlined on the agenda. Have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Thank you.
If I can interrupt just for a minute?
Sure.
Can I ask, just to clarify, the hold request? Apologize, but it would be best if we simply postpone that contract, item 13D, to the next meeting. As a point of clarity on my part, my apologies. But if we could do that, that would be better in form and function.
Commissioner Gladney, is that okay with you?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
Okay, let the record reflect that that item will be revisited at the next meeting.
Chairman, if I may ask, is the caveat to that pending clarification of any associated outstanding issue? I mean, no point in bringing it forward if you don't have all things clear on it, is it?
Mr. Roach, are we confident that we can get that addressed by then?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Yes.
I don't want to muddle the waters here, but can we also possibly add, are at the next special meeting as needed? In cases, these issues are resolved prior to the next full board meeting?
Commissioner Gladney, would that suffice if that would happen to come up at a special meeting?
If there's no objection from staff, if staff thinks that is a good way to move forward, then I will also move.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, so let the record reflect that this topic will come up if needed at the next special meeting, if everything has been made to clear. If not, it will be at the next regular meeting.
So noted.
Fine, thank you. Next is the Contract Modification, Track System Upgrade Resolution Number 1298. Mr. Tom Grant and Kelly Ham for comments, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is a request for authorization to modify an existing MetroLink Track Systems Upgrade Contract with Railworks Track Services. The original Railworks contract was approved in April 2021. When this briefing paper was presented to the Operations Committee on August 18th, the request included several activities to be performed by Railworks Track Services for a total cost of $5.7 million. This included grade crossing resurfacing at Ewing Avenue, restraining rail curves, material cost increases, an extension of the period of performance for the original contract, and improvements to three grade crossing surfaces in East St. Louis. Because St. Clair County Transit District had not yet acted to approve the grade crossing improvements, those MetroLink projects at Main Street, War Street, and Broadway Avenue in East St. Louis had been removed from this briefing paper, which reduces the total contract price request by $500,000. These East St. Louis improvements may be acted upon separately at a future Board of Commissioners meeting. The other elements, including the grade crossings and restraining rail improvements, the contract time extension, and material cost increases for projects in Missouri, remain in the revised request. Management is recommending that the Board of Commissioners approve this request to allow the President and CEO to modify ByState's 2021 contract with Railworks Track Services for rail upgrades in a maximum not to exceed contract amount of $5,230,296.41. As noted by the Chair, Kelly Ham, ByState Senior Director of Capital Projects, is available to answer any technical questions that you may have concerning the details of this project.
Thank you, Tom. Is there any questions for Tom on that or for Kelly?
I don't have a question on the technical piece. I have a question actually on this came before the Operations Committee. And the change, was the change discussed at the Operations Committee or did it happen after the operations? I don't recall it being discussed at the Operations Committee.
There was discussion at the meeting in regard to the fact that St. Clair County had not, I believe, had not yet acted upon that. And that was the request for hold at that committee meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the request.
So move.
Have a second?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, ayes have it. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Next, Amendment Number Four to the 401K Retirement Savings Program was Resolution Number 1301. Mr. Toblerman, you have some comments?
Yes, good morning, Commissioners. I am presenting on Agenda Item 15, which is Amendment Number Four to the ByState Development 401K Retirement Savings Plan. Back on August 10, the Board of Commissioners approved a collective bargaining agreement with ATU Local 788 Operations and Maintenance and Clerical Units that included the addition of eligibility for those employees under the agency's 401K plan. Board Policy 70.050 requires the board to approve any 401K plan amendments. Due to timing, this was not presented in committee. However, for management to move forward with implementing the 401K plan for these newly eligible employees, Mr. Roach has allowed us to bring this to the full board meeting for approval. Before you is our request to approve Amendment Number Four to the ByState Development 401K Plan, which will allow us to execute on the collective bargaining agreements ratification bonus component and initiate the ability of these employees to make elective contributions and receive a company match under the 401K plan. With that, I'll entertain any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Toblerman on this topic? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
We'll move.
Have a second? I have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Thank you, Dave. Next item, Hush Blackwell Strategies Contract for Lobbying and Consulting Services Resolution Number thirteen zero two. Mr. Roach, you have some comments?
Thank you, Chairman. So one of the very important issues and important that we manage this properly is to be sure that we are accessing our federal legislative team and of course, the teams at the Federal Transit Administration. This will become absolutely critical as we move into a phase of, of potential expansion on the Missouri side, but also for the normal support and successful support that we've received historically from our partners at the Federal Transit Administration. So what I am proposing here is a contract with HBS, Hush Blackwell Strategies. I have met with the HBS team. They have some very, very good insight on pursuing federal money and have the access in DC that is going to be critical as we move forward on these projects. One thing I would note specifically is, as, as you all know, we recently went under contract with HNTB to be the Project Management Consultant, the PMC, on the expansion of Light Rail down the Jefferson Avenue in the North Side, South Side Corridor. In that strategy going for new starts funding, the PMC specifically, gentleman, very professional gentleman, associated with the expansion of the system in Denver, Pranaya Sharif, mentioned that we need to be developing this federal strategy in coordination with our new starts application. So we talked about that strategy specifically. This HBS contract is part of that strategy to be sure that we are lining up those resources as best we can from a federal basis. I would also note that our partners across the state at KCATA use HBS. And I did talk specifically with their CEO about the performance of HBS. Mr. White, the CEO there is very, very pleased with the performance of HBS. So not only have we reviewed the contract, but also some of our colleagues across the state, very, very good partnership, has talked about having a strong federal parallel policy with this contractor. So with that, I want to pause. I also mentioned in the analysis of the other consultants that we have, it's very, very important that we look regularly at managing these consultants, being sure that they are assigned to what our needs are. And we're trying to really pay attention to that and brief the Board regularly. I would also note that there's two phases to this project. There's an initial phase and then a subsequent phase. The initial phase is at a lower cost level. If, for instance, the North Side, South Side project were to be unsuccessful, we would not necessarily have to move into that second phase. So we have a very attractive option before we move into the higher cost aspects of this contract as it's presented. And of course, there are provisions within the contract to cancel the service from, from both sides. And these are standard as far as these consultants are concerned with all of our contracts. And with that, I will pause to be sure that there aren't any specific questions about this HBS contract.
The only thing I'd like to comment is to the other Commissioners is that Mr. Roach has kept me informed of this proposal from the beginning, and I've been able to review, review it, and I think it's a proactive approach that he is proposing here. And so I just want to let the Commissioners know that I think it's worthwhile to take a serious look at it. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah.
I have some, I have several, so Terry, if you want to go ahead.
No, well, I was just going to ask, with the addition of HBS, that brings us up to five lobbyists for various reasons. Issues whether it's federal, state, local, or airport-related, I guess, based on your memo?
Yes, that is correct. We, we have four currently EMS Midwest, Specialist in, in the Illinois legislation, Jim Brown and Associates. And that's federal and FTA. Ray Costello Group, who's also been instrumental on a federal basis in Illinois issues, but also aviation-related and rate district, and then and, and that concludes, Centrix was actually eliminated. We, we canceled the Centrix contract, the city legislation, so that is no longer on the list because wasn't needed. So we do look at and terminate or simply end the relationships with these consultants when necessary.
And my second final question is, is federal funding ever just strictly allocated by region? And if so, if HBS also represents Kansas City, would there ever be a possibility of a conflict where there's limited amount of dollars? And and the feds may have to choose between one or the other? Who would HBS serve?
Actually, a good point. Several of the, of grants are competitively awarded. So it, it is not beyond the realm that we would compete with a project from, from the Kansas City area. I don't contemplate any right now, but that, that simply, that is the case. However, once we get into the FTA analysis of the specific contract that's done at a staff level and the lobbyists do not have access to those scoring issues. But it is, it's certainly a relevant fact that we could be competing against Kansas City, but it's, it's rare and extraordinary.
Anything else, Terry?
No.
Commissioner One Dollar?
So the monthly contract is currently about fifty thousand. You're asking us to approve a potential three-year contract of close to nine hundred thousand. Is there a reason that you haven't broken out how much it's going to be in terms of? Because, you know, first of all, I understand, that, that it's a great group and they're, they do very good work. There's a principal there, you know, former Senator Blunt, who really can't do any active lobbying because of a federal requirements for a couple of years. So I'm trying to figure out how much we're actually going to get of the time of the people that we need. So I, I'm, I'm a little concerned about this. Nine hundred thousand dollars over three years is, is a pretty good-sized contract. So you're going to have to give me a little bit more information about what we're going to get for it.
So the monthly amount is, on the initial phase, is fourteen thousand dollars a month for the first eighteen months. And so I apologize if there's a lack of clarity in here, but, but it, but it is a not-to-exceed amount of actually one hundred and seventy-four thousand, two hundred and fifty on the initial tranche of this project. So it isn't, it isn't that much. And then on the second phase, we would move the monthly amount up to thirty-five thousand, assuming that things went well. I did have an active interview process with the HBS team, and although obviously the presence of, of Mr. Blunt is significant, they have a lot of very highly qualified individuals that are noted in, in their, in their proposal, who also had very strong ties and access and a, an embedded strategic knowledge of, for instance, the federal processes, especially the new starts process. The new starts process, which would be the primary conduit for the north-south line, is absolutely critical and important that we develop a strong legislative strategy that includes essentially both sides of the aisle. So senatorial access in both Missouri and Illinois is very key because the way new starts works is that we not only have to then get properly scored and have a strategy for that, but then we also have to have our legislative team mobilized and aware of the project, both at the Senate level and the congressional level. And that includes coordination on both sides of the ripper, both Missouri and Illinois. Last time we were in DC, in fact, we did a preliminary briefing of three of the senators, both Illinois senators and and Senator Schmidt from, from Missouri in a primer for this. Those access points are absolutely key. And we thought that the help, especially from, from a staff level and including individuals, for instance, Mr. Hartley, Mr. Loston, are very well briefed in the intricacies and importance on a staff level of these critical projects. And access to high-level FTA staffers is a huge part of a contract like this. And so we thought it best that we start on an initial phase and work our way into this as we build momentum. But I'm happy to go to more detail, Commissioner. But I want to try to answer your question at least reasonably briefly.
So who set up your initial meetings? I'm assuming it wasn't them since they don't have a contract yet. It wasn't?
So I can, I, I can answer this. And at, at a certain point, if we start getting into, you know, negotiations and all that, we can discuss it either tier or an executive session, whatever, but I, I set up the initial meeting because the, the first meeting that was, that was occurring in Washington DC with Toby, I thought we could use some additional help to, to, for, for strategy and as far as that sort of thing was concerned. It was, the first meeting was informal. It was, you know, things were discussed and I said, you know, does this look like this makes sense for both parties to move forward? And then it was discussed further, what I think would make sense, and, and I do share some of the concerns of some of the other board members of the, the entire price and, and everything. I think I, I, I sort of envisioned this as a, that first eighteen-month contract with not the second piece, with an option for the, for both parties if they decide that it makes sense later on to go with that second, more expensive piece, not, not to have them both brought in because, you know, that the facts and circumstances might change. It might, we might get to the point a year and a half from now where it doesn't make sense to go forward anymore for, for, for both parties. We might not need that extra muscle, that extra support. So I think that brings the cost of the project down significantly. I do think, and it's Talby mentioned, and the names of the folks aren't on the tip of my tongue right now, but there, there is an impressive legislative team that has worked, you know, in the administration, outside of the administration, that would be able to hit the ground running on this day one. And, and the final piece there to what Rose, and I think the good point Terry made, I do think there is a, there needs to be a constant effort and a reassessment of who it makes sense to retain and how we're using them for the folks that we have. So there, I, I personally think that at some point in the future, it might make some sense to, to reallocate, reshuffle, and, and do what we've already done with some of our consultants, because I, I don't like the idea either of having, you know, five, five folks, but I, I'd like to, you know, move forward with this if we could in a sensible way that sticks with the original, you know, the fourteen mark, and then allows us to assess it later and and then reassess our team as a whole. But that's, that's the, the answer to your question and then the additional piece that I wanted to add.
So I appreciate that, and respectfully, nobody knows more about this particular issue than I do, since this is what literally I did.
Understood.
Professional life, which is why I'm asking some pretty tough questions. I, I do have one more. Tell me who, what other transit or transportation clients do they have?
So I do know off the bat that KCATA is one of their clients, which I mentioned in my comments. But I would have to look into that, Rose. I don't, I don't have a listing of the other transportation clients that HBS has. So I don't know the answer, and I apologize. I want to just clarify that on the amounts that eighteen, eighteen months would be two hundred and sixty-five thousand, five hundred, just to be clear. And, and we had mentioned the yearly amount not to exceed within this contract, thinking of it as a phased approach. So I, I want to be absolutely accurate, and I, I apologize on that if, if we were to do the full thirty-six, as you very correctly said, the, the, it would be eight hundred and ninety-five thousand, roughly nine hundred thousand, as you noted. So I apologize and thank you for allowing me just to clear that up.
Well, and let me be clear that nine hundred thousand is just for Hush Blackwell. It doesn't include our other consultants. And, and I understand how important it is to have lobbying support in Illinois and Missouri for the activities that we need to pursue, particularly to expand any kind of, of light rail. So I'm supportive of that, and I'm supportive of having professionals. I think I'm uncomfortable potentially approving this large of a contract for this amount of time. So I'm going to suggest that we pull out anything beyond the eighteen months. I'm happy to come back and have a conversation, but I'm not willing to make that kind of financial commitment at this point.
That makes sense to me too, Rose.
If, if I may, it, some of us maybe have not been privy to the totality of the discussion or the fullness of it. Does it, it's almost sound as if we need to pull back a bit and have a larger, more in-depth discussion about this. I can, hearing Terry's points, which are very valid, and, you know, the numbers are going up, and for each consultant you have, there is a a tab that goes with it. So is this something we need to pull back and have a more in-depth discussion about? Before we move forward with it? Because even an eighteen-month amount is a very large amount.
Toby, I'll defer to you on that. Is there anything pressing out there based on this request that would delay that if we pulled back on this and had a further discussion?
I, I think the eighteen-month idea is a very good one. I, I think it's very reasonable and within a normal negotiation with a consultant. It's very important to constantly be looking at this essentially stable of actors and be sure that they are being responsive. I do take that quite seriously, and we have changed our, our consultants over the last four years several, several times and have eliminated some contracts in order to make this work and renegotiated some of these contracts that you see. So I do think that it would be reasonable, especially to move to the eighteen months. But, but of course, you know, I, I want to be responsive to the Board, but I do want to be capable of doing my job. It is my job to, to get into these detailed strategic discussions. Did have a meeting with HBS. I do think that they are very, very high-level consultants and ones that we could use, especially if on the city application, we would be moving into conceivably project development. we would be moving into conceivably project development in the early part of 2024. So I, I think it's, I would like to move forward on the contract. I think that there is a need for it, albeit with these very reasonable adjustments that the commissioners have asked for. In other words, moving back on that contract amount. I'd be happy to negotiate that with this team. They've been a really reasonable team and have been engaged in being sure that their contract was responsive to the needs of the agency.
So Commissioner Windmiller?
I have something too, if I may, Chairman.
Yes. Go ahead, Commissioner.
I am very familiar with Hush Blackwell in, in multiple levels and multiple ways. So I'm not questioning the credibility and the capacity of that organization. They are an excellent organization. And, you know, I have worked and will continue to work with them. I, I see in, in the far distant future. So there's no question about the firm. It's just the process.
Thank you. So Commissioner Windmiller, your suggestion of the 18 months, is that something that you want to motion?
Yeah, I would, I would like to, well, what, what's the procedure here? I'd like to amend the, the motion to include just Phase One of HBS's federal team for 18 months at 14, $750 per month. And then we can revisit it. I would also, so, and that's the motion I would like to, to make as an adjustment to the original motion.
Okay, so, okay, we have that motion. Do I have a second before a discussion?
I'll second that.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or clarification needed on the motion?
So the, the only thing I wanted to add, and I wanted to add it during the discussion piece was, Toby, I appreciate everything that you do and the negotiations that you go through for, on behalf of the staff, and that is absolutely appropriate to your role. But you do know that we have large contracts. They do go through the committee process, with the exception of certain contracts. And when it comes to, because you have expertise on your board in this area, it might be a good idea to have these kinds of contracts come up before a committee so that some discussion can be held with commissioners prior to it coming to the board. And also to make sure that you take advantage of the expertise of your board members about issues related to lobbying, legislative work, policy work. So that was just the comment I needed to make.
Any other comments on the, before I call for a vote? Hearing none, all in favor on the motion and seconded by Commissioner Windmiller, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. I appreciate the good comments and a good conversation. Moving on, item 17, Emerson Park update. Mr. Roach, you're up again.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. So I, just as a form of update, we, just to reiterate to the Board of Commissioners, you already approved this project in concept on the percentages and basis that is here. However, because of the construction schedule and so on and where the construction market is right now, I, I felt compelled to update you about where the numbers were heading. And the earlier version, we had contemplated the cost of the building being closer to the $10 million mark. But with the development of these various facilities, it's going to be more expensive than that. And I just felt that it was very important to give you an update and the memo contained in giving you an update of where the project was headed. But even with these increases in expenses, this has to do with the really high operability and great investment by Sinclair County Transit District in this really worthwhile building. I would note that having, for instance, 911 operations directly on the alignment, having a, a commitment from Sinclair County with the Sheriff's Department Office directly on the alignment, our transit system is beneficiaries of that co-location. And indeed, we are not paying for those parts. But we are paying for the operability of a very, very important OCC 2, which now, as far as the operations of our light rail line, we are now dispatching 95% of our trains out of the 29th Street facility, which means that the duplication of an OCC location there very close to 29th Street makes sense from an operating standpoint. And also, the Ewing facility is getting older. It was originally built in the 90s and it's getting time for us to make some upgrades there. So when we make those upgrades and have a secondary location that we can concentrate out of, this makes a lot of sense as we continue to manage our light rail assets. So I just wanted to be sure to reiterate, it's a big project, very important one. It's going really well. Great partnership with Sinclair County Transit District in this. It's really going to change the layout of the station. I would note that when the Secretary of Transportation was in town, that was the feature station, not only the 29th Street facility, but we got on the train and rode to Emerson Park. And I will tell you, the secretary looked around when he got off that train and said, what's going on? So it's very good when those things are happening and we're seeing construction commitments in the town of East St. Louis, Illinois. And it's a, a good project, but it made sense that I update you on the project, on the process of this project and that we did have some increase in cost. And that concludes my remarks. Thank you.
And Toby, the, the benefit of the OCC being there will actually build in redundancy once that's completed, am I correct?
That's absolutely correct. We've always felt a little vulnerability with only one facility in Ewing. Unfortunately, we were reminded of this when we were going through the worst of COVID and I had several dispatchers who, who got sick at the same time because we were unable in a very confined space to put some of those protections. And we were at one point, very late at night, very worried about getting service out because of that. Just as an example of the importance of some duplicity of primary services. So we have seen that vulnerability before. We were able to manage through it, but of course, that duplication of service is critical to a 22-hour-a-day, 365 operation.
Very good, thank you. Any questions for Toby on that item? Hearing none, moving on, unscheduled business. Toby, you have any unscheduled?
I do not, thank you.
Very good. Operations report, Mr. Chuck Stewart, you have comments for us?
I do, sir. Thank you very much. Good morning, everyone. Before I start my operations report, I have to give out a few commendations. There was a Midwest Transit Conference was held in Kansas City the first week in September. And at that conference, three of our operators, Jimmy Braxton from Metro Bus, Tiara Lockwood from MetroLink and Jerome Pampkin from Coloradoide, they were honored as Midwest Transit Operator Champions. And then they were again honored at the CMT Annual Meeting last week. So just needed to share that. I got to give all my operators their props, so. I'd like, you have in your packet your operations update for July and your workforce update as well for July. I'd like to, rather than going into July operations, I want to close out our last fiscal year that ended June 30. For fiscal year ended June 30, our system-wide boardings were 19.6 million. As, that was a 6% increase over the previous year, which was a 6% increase over the year before that. And then we go back to fiscal year 21, where we had 17.3 million boardings, which was down 43% from the previous year. So bottom line, we are slowly bringing back ridership. Those same kind of numbers apply to bus, MetroLink. Coloradoide was down, has been down consistently the last couple of years, fiscal year 22 and 23, 15 and 16%. But I'm going to talk about that in more detail. We've had a lot of discussion about Coloradoide so far and I want to add a little bit to that as I finish, as I go through my report. On your workforce update, it's a July report. So this is the beginning of another fiscal year. If you will, one of the items of note is that when, in our budgeted positions for Metro Bus, our budgeted positions have been reduced to 635 from 789 of the prior year. There's a reason for that, a couple of reasons for that. One is, of course, our difficulties that we were experiencing, our challenges in attracting and retaining operators. So we need to refocus on, we need to be realistic about what we can accomplish. We are not, this is not a sprint. We're doing a lot of things that I'm going to talk about in terms of attraction and retention, but it's not, it's not a sprint. It's going to take some time. It's going to take some time. What we need to focus on right now is reliability and stability. As we add more people, our current requirement for the service that we are providing right now is 547 operators. We have 544. So that means we have some missed trips, okay? And our, our goal is 635. Over this next year, we will be focused on, we will be focused on reliable service. As we get more operators, we intend to increase frequencies. We're going to add back nights and weekends and those kind of things. But reliability and stability are the key. In terms of staffing levels for MetroLink and Coloradoide, they have not changed. They're not changed. MetroLink is still 102, Coloradoide 201. I still need 24 MetroLink operators. I still need 85 Coloradoide operators. Now, the Coloradoide number is probably the most important. This Coloradoide is a complimentary service, okay? We, our goal with Coloradoide is to provide, to have zero denials in the mandated service area, which is 3/4 miles of our fixed route service. Our goal, that is the FTA goal, zero denials in that area. So we've got a long way to go to get there. I can't expand, I can't expand bus service until I fix Coloradoide. But I can improve them both at the same time. So Coloradoide is our focus. We also are down 50 mechanics. We need to focus on that. If I'm going to bring back service to bus and Coloradoide and MetroLink, if I don't have mechanics, I won't be able to do that as well. So this is all, what I'm trying to emphasize is that all of these things are tied together. And really, the, the tail wagging the dog is Coloradoide. We have to improve our Coloradoide service. You know, I read, I read all of those comments. And I agreed with them for the most part. There were two, these are services that we, that should be provided to the disabled community. I don't think we're the, we're the fix-all. We're not the only resource that should be employed in doing that, but we ought to be doing our part. And our part is to provide zero denials in the mandated service area. And that's what we're focused on. So Toby talked about a few things and you as a board have talked about a few things today already in terms of the journey that we've been on and where we're going. We probably talked about the, the acceleration of wage projection progressions that you approved in January of '22. This was before contract negotiations. These were, were in, were accelerations included inside the existing contracts. So that was, that was a reflection of the fact that we understood that we were having retention problems. So we did that. Then you passed the attraction and retention package with, with all the elements, pay parental leave, child and elder subsidies, tuition reimbursement, bonfire. All of those things are, are, are being implemented as we speak. But they're not, just now getting the attention of our frontline people because with the new contract with 788, they're saying, well, I'm going to be here for a while. So what happened to those other things that you promised? So they're asking about those things now. Of course, we've done our $2,000 sign-on bonus, our $1,000 referral bonus. We upped it to a $5,000 signing bonus, which has attracted a lot more people, a lot more online applications. In addition to our hiring events, which have, have been, been successful with, with the help of Maricom and our talent acquisition people and our metro transit team, things are moving in the right direction as it relates to that. Toby talked about 170 offers, well, including the last job event is up to about 240. We've got 31 bus operators in training right now for MetroLink, 10 Coloradoide, currently in class that we'll hope, hope to have online soon. Probably the, somewhere along the line, we did this Coloradoide service reduction, April 10. That was required. We were not providing the service to a much larger area. We needed to focus on providing the best service available to the in the required area. So, and those are where our concerns from the disabled community have come. But again, we are trying to utilize our resources to the best of our ability to service that community within federally mandated guidelines. The biggest thing that has happened, now we're kind of focusing, you know, we've done a lot of things in terms of attraction. The biggest thing that has happened recently in terms of, of our ability to retain, to stop the, the attrition, has been the 788 O and M clerical contract. I, I think our operating team, our, our operators, our maintenance people, our clerical people, they are, they are thrilled by this contract. They are, they are jumping in, learning about the 401K program. Now they're thinking more about, you know, what am I going to do in the next three, four, five, six years as it relates to my employment here? Give me more education about the 401K plan. So we're doing all of those things. So I think that's now, I think the pieces are coming together. The things that we have done in terms of attraction, I think they're working. The things that we are now doing in terms of retention, I think they're working. One of the things that, just a small stat, until, for this calendar year, we have averaged losing 12.8 Metro Bus drivers a month, losing through attrition, okay? Last month, with the advent of the new contract and the buzz around that, it was only three. So I think things are going in the right direction. But again, it's not, it's not a sprint. It's not going to be fixed overnight. It's going to take a while. We may be 24 months out before we really get to where we need to be. Greatest thing that's coming up, excited about, is the Coloradoide contract expires in January of 2024. We're already working on that contract. We're going to offer some of the, the same things that we offered in the 788 contract in terms of, of enabling our Coloradoide staff to earn a, a in terms of, of, um, enabling, uh, our Coloradoide staff to earn a, a better living wage and have better benefits. So I think that is our next step, our next move, uh, as it relates to, to the retention issue and basically stabilizing, uh, our, our team going forward. That's a lot. Uh, we've already talked about a lot of it already, uh, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chuck. I appreciate that detailed report to just a couple of comments on the Colorado. I, I have read those comments that came in and, uh, I concur. You know, they, they are, when you read them, uh, they, they really, they're touching. Uh, one of the, one of the questions, uh, and you touched on it briefly, we are, we are, um, at our required mandate that, from FTA that we're supposed to be doing in our area. Is that correct? Or are we close to?
Service area. Yes, yes, Commissioner, in terms of the service area. We are still, uh, we still have not met the requirement of zero denials.
Right.
That's what we're focusing on right now. I need to get those people in place so that we can get the service out there in, in order to, to, um, bring those denials under control. So I can, I don't have the, the capability right now of expanding any service or adding back any service. I need to be good at performing the service requirement right now.
And I agree with that. And the reason I bring that up is some of those comments talked about, uh, um, the client calling and, you know, not getting the service that they're requesting. Uh, the one thing that I think would be, I'd like to see, and I know you can pull that together, is the amount of cancellations that we receive from the client that, that would also, uh, have a great impact on people being picked up on a timely, uh, uh, timeframe. You know, if somebody got a client calls and schedules an appointment, then we send the, uh, uh, vehicle out there only to have somebody say, well, I'm not going today, for whatever reason it may be. That creates a delay on the next person. So I'd like to just know if you've got a record of that on how many times we're seeing that.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. And that was one of the things when FTA sent in their consultants for the triennial review, they looked at all of those things. And they basically, um, acknowledged that we were in compliance with how we were doing those things. Our operations are good. What, what's our issue with being able to, to put more vans out there and provide more service? But on your July, um, operations report, there is a stat on cancellations canceled by passenger. And for July, that was over five thousand cancellations, which is like fifteen percent of the requests. So we do maintain records of all of those.
Right. And so that has to be added into some of the, um, cards that I saw of, of the client himself canceling this. And again, it is probably for a legitimate reason why they had to cancel or whatever, but that creates a operational logistic factor there. So I, I just want everybody to take that into consideration also, but we are trying to do everything in our power. Like you said, Sharda being able to pull employees out of the sky and put them to work with, in vehicles, it's, it's, it's a chore. But I want, uh, those who are listening and sending those cards in to know that it's not falling on, uh, uh, people who don't care. I think all the commissioners made that very clear. Any other questions for Chuck on his report?
Hearing none. Thank you. Appreciate it, Chuck. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Uh, Need Meyer, would you give us the, uh, upcoming meeting dates?
Yes, the next Safety and Security Committee meeting will be held on October fifth. The next Operations Committee, as well as the Audit, Finance and Administration Committee meetings will be held on October thirteenth. And the next Board of Commissioners meeting will be held on November seventeenth. All of the meetings will start at eight thirty AM.
Thank you. At this time, I need a motion that the board go into an executive session for the purpose of discussing legal, confidential or privileged matters as permitted under by State Development Board Policy, Chapter Ten, Section ten point zero eight zero, D one legal, D two real estate and D one auditors. I need a motion?
I'll move.
Have a second?
Second.
And a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Beach?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson? Commissioner Gladney?
Yes.
Commissioner Windmiller?
Aye.
Commissioner Simmons?
Yes.
The motion passed.
Thank you.